...his husband, and he retires and black people in the market. And he knew right away and that he's there, he saw it in the work, and he checked on it, and then he phoned me, because I don't understand, Andrew, you said, I'm not trying to, but maybe before you start spending a whole lot of money, you might want to take a look at this, because I don't know.
It's just, it's not, it's not a good, it's not a good testimony on. Yeah, you're right. We don't. Yeah, okay. I'll flip that to you.
That's, that's a good thing. Bring this meeting to order, please. Public information notice, as required under bylaw one four four dash two thousand and seven, the public is advised by council's intention to adopt the following meeting as June twenty first, twenty twenty two meeting. This is June twenty first? June seventh. Authorized budget amendments as a result of recent funding announcements that were not previously built into the twenty two, twenty twenty two capital plan. Five hundred thousand dollars to be funded through the Northern Ontario Heritage Fund Corporation for the City of Canora Parks repairs and improvement projects. Four hundred and fifty thousand to be funded through NOHFC for the Norman Park Playground Interpretive Area Upgrade and Improvement Projects. Five hundred thousand dollars to be funded through NOHFC for the City of Canora Baseball Diamond Enhancement Project. Five hundred thousand dollars to be funded through NHO, NOHFC for the City of Canora Kuwait Memorial Arena Repair and Upgrade Project. Four hundred and eighty thousand dollars to be funded through the NOHFC for the City of Canora Dock Upgrade Project. Four hundred thousand dollars to be funded through the NOHFC for the Museum retrofit Project. Three million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, fifty-six cents to be funded through Invest in Canada Infrastructure Program through its Community Culture and Recreation Stream Program for the Canora Recreation Centre Rehabilitation Project. Acquire thirty-eight properties for municipal purposes from the Province of Ontario described in FCP two oh two hundred dash zero four one. List of forfeited corporate properties and property descriptions in the amount of three million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars plus HSD. Could we have the blessing and land acknowledgement, Councilor Chase?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. As we gather, we recognize we are on Treaty III lands which are steeped in rich Indigenous history and home to many First Nations and Métis people today. We continue to be thankful for our partnerships with Indigenous people. We give thanks for the many blessings that we enjoy in the City of Canora. We seek wisdom in our mind, clearness in our thinking, truth in our speaking, and always love in our hearts so that we may try always to unite the citizens of Canora. Let these principles guide us in our decision making.
Thank you, Councilor Chase. I'd like to call for a blessing or a pardon, a declaration of a kindred interest in the general nature thereof on today's agenda or from a meeting in which a member was not in attendance. None declared. I'll call for confirmation of previous committee minutes, the regular committee of the whole meeting, May tenth, twenty twenty-two.
Your worship, move by myself, seconded by Counselor Poirier, that the minutes from the last regular committee of the whole meeting held May tenth, twenty twenty-two, be confirmed as written and filed.
Clear? And carried. Now we'll move to presentations. I would ask that anyone turn off their cell phones, we have no interruptions. The deputations will be allowed for fifteen minutes at maximum, and I would ask that anybody in the gallery respect that the only speakers are counsel and the deputation presenter. First up, Dr. Gerald Croker, divestment of city interest in Kuwaiton Medical Clinic.
Great, okay. Okay, thank you. So, yeah, I'm Dr. Croker. I have, I'll just introduce the other doctors here, there's Dr. Weiner, Dr. Olson, Dr. Weeb, and we have Dr. Lowen here today as well. Mayor and counsel, thanks for providing us with the opportunity to speak to you this morning regarding the city's interest in divesting the ownership of the Kuwaiton Medical Clinic as detailed in the publicized call for expressions of interest in the acquisition of the property. We were quite surprised to learn about the posting. We were informed of it by a concerned patient at our clinic. Our hope today is that by highlighting the history of the clinic and giving some information on the service delivery to the community, we can convince you that this clinic is an asset for the city to own rather than a liability to dispose of. The construction of the Kuwaiton Medical Clinic was a culmination of a community effort by the residents of Kuwaiton who recognized the need for sustainable medical services. They fundraised fifty percent of the cost of the project, and that was then matched with funding by the Northern Ontario Heritage Fund Corporation, or NOHFC, to complete the financing. Construction was finished in nineteen eighty-five. At that time, the corporation of the town of Kuwaiton acquired the property and signed an agreement with the founding physician, Dr. Lowen, to lease the property, as well as to repay to the town the amount that was fundraised by the citizens. This repayment of the fundraising contribution was completed around nineteen ninety-two. The building continued to be leased to the physicians who provided services from the location. The intent of the lease payments was to address eventual expenses related to building maintenance costs, which would be expected to arise during the life of the building. Currently, the physicians who work in the clinic pay a fair market lease rate based on the location. Numerous leasehold improvements have been completed and financed by the service providers in the clinic. So, our clinic is unique in Canora in several ways, and I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to highlight that. We're proud to have established a model there that's service-oriented and sustainable. We serve approximately twenty-five-hundred citizens of Canora and Kuwaiton. We're the only clinic in which the physicians offer truly cradle-to-grave service, from managing deliveries and obstetrics, including C-sections, care throughout the life, including serving our patients in hospital, and we're actually the only practice in Canora to do this, and care at the end of life, including in long-term care facilities and palliative care. So, our physicians embody a diverse skill set unique to rural specialists and provide really a spectrum of services to the community, not just limited to patients of our clinic. So, that includes cancer chemotherapy, minor surgery, care in the emergency department, hospitalist care, so this is if you're admitted to hospital and you're a patient of a practice that's not Kuwaiton Clinic, then the hospitalist service takes care of you, and we participate in that, advanced diagnostic test interpretation, and obstetrical care to patients of other practices as well. So, our doctors from this small clinic in this small town actually have been recognized with numerous awards for excellence in care, including Ontario Regional Family Physician of the Year, Dr. Weiner, and this year's Ontario Rural Emergency Room Physician of the Year, Dr. Weeb. Our clinic is the only clinic with advanced access on-demand booking, which means that a patient can be seen within a couple of days for any reason. And we were actually the only clinic to deliver an onsite COVID vaccination program to our patients. Further, our clinic has historically been the most effective training and recruitment site for physicians in Canora. We've been associated with Nozum as a teaching site since their inception and with other universities prior to that. Of the fifteen physicians in Canora who currently have family practices, eight were trained in the Kuwaiton Medical Clinic. We are from Canora, and we have committed to serve Canora. Two of us were born and raised in Canora, and the other two have made this our home. We've raised families here. We've lived here for more than twenty years. Our clinic has been a model of stability with no unexpected turnover of providers in the past twenty years. But our stability is not guaranteed, and we feel it's now at risk. Even the possibility of sale of our building has been destabilizing as it has created uncertainty for our patients, staff, and providers. Privatization of the clinic building will create further pressure on our operation by increasing the cost to provide services and by creating a perpetual risk of loss of purpose of the building. Privatization will not lead to sustainability in the delivery of medical services to the citizens. So, we feel that the city has given the citizens and service providers a bit of a mixed message. On the one hand, we know the city has developed some policies to attempt to attract providers, including providing funding for recruitment and retention of health professionals, but is also sending the message that the Kuwaiton Medical Clinic is not of value to the city and has even invited consideration of other uses of the building in the expression of interest. To us, if the vision of a new landlord doesn't align with the goals of service delivery to the patients, then we couldn't provide any guarantee that we'd be able to continue our operation there. This building was built with the sole purpose of providing care to the citizens as a project initiated by the people, and we believe there's at least an ethical and moral obligation on the part of the city to act as a steward in this to ensure that the patients of the clinic can be confident they'll be able to access medical care there as they have since the day that it opened. We would like to work with the city to provide a better solution to sustainability than privatization, and we have a number of alternatives that could qualify. Our, our first choice, and probably the easiest for everybody, would be to maintain the status quo. We've been happy to have the city as our landlord. The city could retain ownership of the asset, and it'd be seen as a progressive and modern community that values medical care. We'd continue to lease the building and provide services there. The second option would be to follow a process analogous to what was done with the other clinic in Canora, which is transfer the ownership of the building to an existing or a new nonprofit corporation to take over stewardship of the asset. We know that a year ago, the city offered to transfer ownership of this building for a dollar to the KHCC, which is the organization that's responsible for the Patterson Clinic, and they declined to accept it, but that does at least demonstrate the city was favorable to that model as a possibility. After the committee declined to accept the building, we requested last year that it be transferred to us, but we did not receive a response from the city. So, we, who represent more than a quarter of the physicians with family practices in all of Canora, are willing to work with you on this, and we hope we've convinced you that the Kuwaiton Medical Clinic, through its unique and consistent model of service delivery, is actually a jewel in Canora's crown that you can be proud to maintain ownership of. But no matter the outcome, the four of us wanted to be able to look our patients in the eye and tell them we stood up for them today, and whatever the city's decision is, it was made with all the relevant information available. Thank you.
Dr. Croker, I just have a quick question. So, I'm not aware of the clinic making an appeal to the city, so I've never seen that, and I don't believe anybody on our team is aware of that, and in fact, we've had conversations with members of your clinic, and that option was rejected. So, I'd love to see the offer that, that you feel the clinic made to the city because that has not been forthcoming.
Can I have Dr. Weiner speak to that? I think he was.
Sure, of course. You're Kyle, I believe, we spoke on the phone.
Yes, sir.
You and two other staff members.
Stace and Adam and I, we had a conversation.
With me and asked me to fill you in on the background of the clinic so that you could talk to council in an attempt to move through this process. In that letter that was provided last July, it indicates that we would be willing to accept the building, but our preference is that the City of Canora continue to be the landlord. We have the letter that I sent to you.
I, I've read that letter. That's, I, that's not consistent with my reading of the letter. I'll, I'll take another look at it, so thank you for answering that.
I can answer any questions.
Questions or comments, Counselor? Counselor Smith?
Thank you for your presentation, Dr. Croker. I've been a longtime resident of Kuwaiton and on city council for a while. I know how hard we try to recruit and retain doctors in our community and what that facility brings to our community and the physicians that have been there. And you, you just mentioned one thing that I wanted to follow up on. You said that you, yourself, the doctors have invested some funds in maintaining that building. So, I just wanted to have a bit of a conversation with you about that, because I understand, since amalgamation, we've collected lease payments from you, and I think amalgamation is twenty years in the past.
Yeah.
And we have invested money, the city has invested capital funds in that building, and I've asked for an accounting from our CAO about the revenue collected, the capital costs expended, because I think that's really important information going forward, but it was interesting for me to hear that you've invested some of your own money in building maintenance.
Yeah, we've, we've invested some of our own money. We've also pursued and obtained grants in order to improve and provide more space, for example, to allow the family health team to expand their operation and support our clinic. So, we've renovated, we've done renovations to the clinic to give space to those providers as well, yeah.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I, I do understand how important that clinic is to, to Kuwaiton and the whole community, for sure.
Right, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Griller?
Dr. Croker, I appreciate the presentation, and I'm, I'm happy to see that the door stays open, so we can look at some options in respect to your presentation and quality of care. So, thank you.
Great, thanks. Thank you.
Counselor Griller? Thank you for your presentation. We'll take this under consideration. Next up, I'd like to hear from Susan Cone, north of, north of bypass property owners.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to present today. Our concerns. My name is Susan Cone, and with me today is Richard Cone, Rob Perry, and Kathy Billick, some residents up north of the bypass. I'm a full-time resident on Williams Road on the east side of East Melick on Blacksturgeon Lakes. I'm representing approximately eight hundred property owners who live in the City of Canora that are, is, that are in north of the bypass area. This includes Blacksturgeon Lakes, Grassie Lake, Austin Lake, Schnar Lake, Coker Road, East Melick, Essex, west side of Blacksturgeon, including the Blacksturgeon Property Owners Association, and properties not on lakefront. This number includes private property owners and businesses. The residents of the area of north of the bypass are bringing forth complaints today, which include lack of representation on council, poor road conditions, and inability to secure timely repairs, accurate information, and access to information. The three complaints are interrelated, and I'll explain our issues. Concerning lack of representation, prior to May thirteen evacuation order, the water had risen over marsh crossings on East Melick by Essex, Coker by Kelly, East Melick by Bell's Point, as it does frequently in the spring. Granted, this year was higher, but not higher than the ninety-seven high watermark levels, not higher than the hundred-year watermark level, which is a city specification for road building. It's used by the city roads and the engineering department to set specs for roads going through marshes. Is it possible to show the Williams Road extension picture, please? This is an extension built on Williams Road by Naniska and Sons and Black Fox Construction. You can see there's no water over it. This was at the high, highest watermark in Blacksturgeon's Lakes this spring. It was built in two thousand and eight to the City of Canora's specifications. It was built to the one hundred-year high watermark, which was measured in several places around the city, the dam being one of those places. It has four very large culverts, at least thirty to thirty-six inches in diameter, as well as at least four smaller culverts. A very well-built road with expertise and a well-inspected road by the city engineering department at that time. Complaints about the poor maintenance of the road areas I have mentioned above have been made most years. This year, the roads department could have lifted the roads and made them safe to travel without creating an evacuation order. A local road builder stated they called the city and gave an estimate and stated they could get people back in their homes immediately. The report, they report that they spoke with an engineer at the city at least three times over the month and never heard back on their bids or their offers to repair the roads and lift them enough for passage. As the evacuation order continued, people were forced to walk through the flooded area in hip waders, parking a car at either end of the access so they could go to work, get their children to school, go to medical appointments, get groceries, or they had to risk crossing in their own vehicles. The city announced it wasn't safe to travel, but hydro trucks went through, building supply deliveries went through, and people had nowhere to go as evacuation order did not have an appropriate evacuation plan. We were all forced to continue traveling through, safe or not. The roads could have been made safe much earlier than they were, should have been, without the residents north of the bypass needing to phone, complain, beg, harass their council, harass their mayor, harass their roads department and operations. When a resident near the Coker-Kelly flooded marsh phoned last week and asked when the marsh area was to be lifted to match the lifting of the other areas, he was told to drive around. He lives close to Kelly, separated from Reddit by the flooded area, adding miles at extra expense. This is not an appropriate answer, especially ignoring the concerns for emergency services, OPP, or fire. It would be over forty minutes for the fire truck to get there going around. Again, this, there was a relatively quick and easy fix quoted by a local roads builder and refused by the city for unknown reasons. We state the evacuation order was never needed, earlier repairs and solutions were available, and we should have new service in a timely way. We feel if we had a council member who was in tune with our concerns, perhaps the decision to stop road repairs and substitute an evacuation order with the threat of no emergency coverage if you choose to shelter at home would not have been made so hastily. A response from the CAO to one of our residents indicated that he thought people were just anxious to get to their recreational properties, clearly ignoring the needs of the hundreds of people who call north of the bypass their home and businesses who need to operate there and to travel through the city to access their businesses. Please show the Pinecombe Drive picture. This is a recent picture of Pinecombe Drive. Last year, it finally got reparations. It had a similar break like this in twenty nineteen. In twenty twenty-one, a local contractor was hired to repair it. During the building process, the residents expressed concerns that the road was not being built correctly. They could see that piles and heavy rock were needed to shore up that side, and they were not installed. This is what happened five months later. The road simply fell off. This picture demonstrated the builder's incompetence, and worse, our city engineers' inspection of this road was not competent. A new road should not be split in half with a heavy snowfall in a five-month period. To this day, the people that live on Pinecombe Drive are driving up this road. It looks wider in the picture than it really is. It's more like a donkey trail. It would barely be passable by fire truck or emergency services. It's a huge hazard. As you can see, there never was guardrails put on there. Please show the picture of the Bailey Bridge exit, Bailey Bridge exit. Now, we got a lovely new Bailey Bridge about two or three years ago, and as you can see, this is the exit of the bridge. You can see that the road slopes up just past the exit of the bridge. So, when you come off that bridge, there was a dip in the road after the new construction and before the rise, and it was clearly an issue that could have been, if it had been built correctly, would not have been an issue at these high waters. But as it turned out, the, the exit area needed to be, to have the road built up with a culvert to meet that hundred-year watermark, to be effective for high-water years. So, on May thirteen, with evacuation order, we were trying to cross the bridge, so we were parked there, waiting for passage. They had, we had city crews out there. We waited to pass. We counted eight city trucks of various sizes, some of them dump trucks carrying material, and eight personnel. They had built a baffle at each side of the road at the base of the bridge, and were standing, watching it fill up and create a bathtub. Please show the Bailey Bridge bathtub picture.
So, you mean that's the pond?
I'm sorry?
Is it the pond?
Oh, it might be the ponds, yes. Thank you, yes. Bathtub pond, yeah. Okay. So, this is what it would look like to someone who's maybe wanting to cross through there and not really knowing how deep it is. So, the baffles on either side created like a pond or a bathtub, and, but I think our point is with the amount of equipment and personnel and materials that were there, a culvert and appropriate rock could have been installed and a permanent solution created at that time. So, we don't know if it's really all about lack of competency or if there's some demand to cut corners, but we want to bring it to your attention that we need some review of the process. These are just two examples of the neglect of our road conditions and residents' complaints, and there are many, many more. The reduced evacuation order opened up some areas but left Beauty Bay Golf Course inaccessible, as well as Hidden Trails Resort. Repairs to School Road could have been done earlier in May using local contractors. We know of them to be competent and affordable, and we know they offered. Hidden Trails alone pays thirteen thousand a year in, in city taxes and is still not being supplied with a date to have access. We need investigations into the reluctance to repair, the manner in which contracts are awarded, competency of engineering inspections, and what repercussions are levied against contractors who do incompetent work. City tax revenue on Williams Road of about just twenty houses and some vacant land is a hundred and seventy thousand yearly. When residents call the city roads department for Dust Retardant, they're told, sorry, not in the budget. Sorry, not this year. Sorry, maybe next year. Call again and get your name on the list. This has happened repeatedly. The residents are not being treated respectfully, and we need council to intervene. City of Canora's pamphlet states the entire budget for Dust Retardant is forty thousand. I think Williams Road is paying for that many times over and being refused the service. As an example of tax revenue that city collects from roads in the area, just a snapshot, James Road collectively pays two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred every year. Two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred. Pinecombe Drive comes off of James. Pinecombe Drive alone, the one with the split road, seventy-six thousand yearly, and they've been driving on a road like that for two years. Grassie, Austin, and Schnar, the seventy-five properties up there, two hundred and forty thousand a year from, from tax revenue. Worona Road, a hundred and fifty. Ritchie and Lawton together, a hundred and fifty thousand. Williams Road, a hundred and seventy thousand. So, finally pulling this all together, we would like council to supply us with property owners' names and addresses of all the properties north of the bypass in the City of Canora. The names and addresses used by the tax department to send tax notices. We've been denied this by city staff when we approached personally. We know it is legally public record, and we have the right to access, but we do not have the leverage to get the information, but we expect you do and can. Secondly, we'd like to have the total tax revenue for the properties north of the bypass. Again, this is public record. We have not been able to procure this information, and we expect you can. Thirdly, we would like one person on council here today, at least until the election in October, to volunteer to be the person to look out for our rights and concerns and requests of citizens of the City of Canora. And we want a three-year road upgrade plan supplied and guaranteed on our major access roads, East Melick and Coker, School, Essex, James, Peterson, Gauthier, Beggs, and Anderson, to avoid future mishaps like this year. We believe much of the crisis this year was man-made, as these water levels have existed in the past one hundred years. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation and comments. Does counsel have any questions or comments?
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
When you ask, when you talk about representation on the council, you are aware that the city does not have a ward system, right?
That's right. That's why I asked you to follow us.
Yeah, all council represents all of the community, and of course, our forms are always open for conversation, and you've had requests of support from council, so we're going to take this under advisement. And the system of government, governance within the city and council, is council responsible for, is a governance role and responsible for policy, and staff is responsible for the organizational, or the operational work out there. I, I am, I understand the concerns within the community. This has been a very and you have, um, requested support from council. So we're going to take this under advisement. Um, and the system of government, governments within the city and council, is council responsible for, uh, is a governance role and responsible for, um, policy? And staff is responsible for the organizational or the operational work out there. I, I am, um, I understand the concerns, um, within the community. This has been a very difficult year and abnormal year, certainly a sign of things to come. Staff have worked very hard this year to, um, ensure that people have access under very difficult conditions, staff sort of just because of COVID and such. So I'm sure that once this situation is over, um, there will be a debrief and where there can be improvements and looking at the budget because budget is policy. So that's where we will look at it. So thank you for your presentation. I know it's been very difficult for many people.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
Thank you.
I would, I'd just say thank you very much, Ms. Combe. I appreciate the feedback. You'll receive a response back from me.
Thank you.
Within a few days, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
And you might note that we will have an update on the flooding status update coming shortly in this meeting. Uh, moving on, uh, corporate services and finance, item one point one, Q1 investment report. Charlotte, I would imagine that's you.
Yes, yes, it is. Um, so quarter one, March twenty twenty-two. Um, I'm sure you realize that, um, all investments have experienced negative market impacts in twenty twenty-two. Um, we've had market deterioration, um, largely because of two key components. Um, the Bank of Canada started raising interest rates, and as you know, they're, they're not done. This negatively impacted the markets as higher rates reduce economic growth and it's lowering earnings in, in corporations and also creating a bit of instability. And the second, of course, is the Russian invasion of Ukraine, which again creates significant uncertainty in, in the global markets. And of course, um, this is going to impact our investments. So, um, sort of having said that, uh, well, we want to be prosperity trust fund investment in the one second group of funds. The market value took a downturn, uh, to the tune of about one point five million over thirty-six million. Uh, again, this is not a realized loss. Uh, this is an unrealized loss and is not a permanent erosion. Um, markets bounce back. Um, this time, it may take a little longer, but we're, we have no intention of divesting, so we'll, you know, we'll be able to ride it out. Um, should also mention that the return since inception on these, um, funds, which we've had now with, with the prudent investor about a year and a half, uh, the return is, since inception is four percent. Uh, the next group of investments, we still have over a four point six million dollars with our ECDEXIA. Uh, the market value took a downturn of, um, almost eighty-four thousand dollars. Um, again, hopefully this will bounce back. We are slowly going to be liquidating these funds as, as we draw down for debt purposes. Um, but again, we still have, um, funds invested here. I'm not keen on liquidating any of these as yet, and I think we need to take a pause because we are in a low-market situation. And until it bounces back, it just doesn't make sense for us to divest in any of this. Uh, the rate of return on since inception, and of course, we've had this money in there for, for many, many years, is two point three eight percent. We also have general fund investments with the one group of funds. Again, another downturn of, uh, almost nine hundred and sixty thousand. Unrealized loss, not a permanent erosion. Um, markets should bounce back in the midterm to, to longer term. The return since inception, and we've got two funds here, uh, is eight point two percent on one and one point two percent on the other. Um, so again, the eight point two is, it's still looking fairly good. We also have a high-interest savings account with the one funds, and the balance is, uh, almost seven point two million at, at the end of March. And that's it.
All right, questions? Andrew?
Yep, uh, thanks, Charlotte. It's, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so, uh, thanks for the update, uh, because I think everybody's having the same problem in the market. Um, so we only have to worry about this at year-end, right? Once we look at doing, um, adjustments, uh, you know, market versus, uh, book value and so on and so forth. So, uh, this is just an update where it's at as of March thirty-first, I'm assuming. Um, so if it's like this at the, at the end of the year, um, that's when we would have to, there would be more of a concern, I suppose.
Yeah, we would have to write down investments to market value and, you know, just hoping that things bounce back. Now, the other thing I should bring your attention to is, um, you know, we do earn interest income and, uh, you know, dividend revenue. Um, again, most of it is recorded in that fourth quarter, um, or in the second quarter. So we're, we're not seeing a lot of that income right now on the March thirty-first statement. It's, it's negligible right now because that's just how the, the investment is accrued or the income is accrued to these investments. So we also have, you know, that income to offset any write-downs.
Okay, thank, thanks, Charlotte.
Any further questions, comments, council? Okay, uh, moving on to item one point two, April twenty twenty-two financial reports.
All right, so these are the financial statements at the end of April. Um, I'm just going to bring to your attention some, um, differences that you may have noticed on the statements. Uh, when we look at HR, uh, you'll see that there's, there's going to be, uh, larger discrepancies in terms of, uh, a difference from the budget or the variance from the budget. This is the department where we have the vacancy recovery, and that's built into the HR budget. So, um, you know, we'll look at maybe a different department or setting it up differently so it's, it stands out by itself. Um, roads departments, uh, they're all below budget right now. And you're probably wondering why, but just to remind you that flooding expenses, uh, we're not, uh, didn't start to, we didn't start to incur flooding expenses until May. So, you know, we'll start to see, um, some, some increases in expenses there. Um, and just so you know, we've set up separate accounts for roads, for sewer and water, and for Kent's emergency services. We set up separate accounts so that we can record all flooding expenses. And in the event that we do get disaster relief funding, that we can easily report on everything we have spent. So you will see that start to kick in, uh, the next month.
And I just want to jump, Charlotte, I just want to jump in really quick. Um, can you share just what the threshold is for the disaster relief funding? Just so that everybody's aware.
It's about three quarters of a million dollars before we are eligible for any funding. So we're trying to be extremely careful in, in recording absolutely everything that we spend. Um, because, you know, you don't want to be at six hundred and fifty thousand and, you know, not qualify, but, um, again, I'd rather spend nothing, but, um, we are trying to capture everything, absolutely everything.
And so just to be clear there, the province has a very specific list of eligible expenses. And so if something is not eligible, we can't claim it. And as Charlotte said, we have, I believe it's three percent of tax levy roughly, which is in that seven hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and sixty thousand dollar range. So we need to incur that amount in eligible expenses to be able to tap into disaster relief funding. So we have not received any disaster relief funding as of yet. So I just want to be very clear with that.
And we're not sure that we'll be eligible, but we certainly included, um, expenses like the, um, rec center, um, you know, evacuation center, those kind of expenses. We're, you know, we're trying to capture everything that we can so that we can say, look, you know, this is what we did incorrect. And we're not done yet. Um, it, it could be, it'll be a couple of months before we, um, even know where we're at. But certainly, um, what I will report to you from here on in is what we have spent in these separate accounts. And, and they're going to be obvious to us because that's all we're putting in there. Um, so we can report to you as time goes on. And we are having our employees hold their wages to these accounts, so that will be included as well. We have a good contact with, uh, municipal affairs. And so if we have any questions in terms of eligibility, um, we can easily ask them and know that we're on the right track. Okay, um, Harborfront looks a little higher than last year. We've already made one payment for the flower contractor. Um, recreation departments, we do have a new, um, system, and March and April revenue have yet to be recorded. I think we just received them March, so I think they're working through some kinks there. And, uh, tourism facilities a little above, um, what's expected has maintenance at the Discovery Center on the A-Back, and we did some security work at the Pavilion. Otherwise, expenses and revenues are very much in line with what, what's expected after four months of operations.
That's it, Charlotte? Questions, uh, Councilor Smith?
Yeah, Carl, I just wanted to follow up on your comments about the, um, the disaster relief fund and declaring an emergency so that the city would be eligible for some expenses. How does that, and just keeping in mind the deputation we just had, how does that impact individuals, our, our citizens? Once we declare, are they, does that put them in a better position to, um, look for funding for some of their expenses?
So great question. So there's two streams. So one is for municipalities, um, so we are working on that. There is another stream for individuals, and we've seen Fort Francis tap into this program. The city has been trying to, the province is the one that makes the declaration of, of, they, they declare that we are, they activate the program for us is the word that I'm looking for, sorry. Um, I, I do not understand why Fort Francis has been able to get their program activated, and we have not. My guess might be that Fort Francis was able to activate theirs before the RIT dropped, and our emergency has been firmly within the RIT period. That's just, I don't know that to be true. I'm just sharing, uh, something around timing that may be impacting our inability to get the province to activate that program for us. So what's important for council to know and for the public to know is that city administration has been working very hard with Emergency Management Ontario and the ministry in charge of that program to try and get that program activated for individuals. Um, so, so that's really what's going on there. So I don't have, uh, we're hoping that that program will be activated, and I don't know if Kent or Heather, uh, who have been, you know, they've been on the ground trying to work and get that program activated. I don't know if you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I can just speak to what we've done so far. So we have been working with the ministry. Kent and I have had, uh, conversations with representatives from the Ministry of Municipalities and Housing. Um, and where it's been left is that they need to send an inspector here. Um, and they were not prepared to do that until roads were reopened and they could assess the, uh, impacts. So really, we've reached out to them again to say we have roads open. So, um, now is the time to come and make that assessment and make that problem available. If there's anything more to add.
And as far as the municipal side goes, you know, as I mentioned, there are eligible expenses and ineligible expenses, and Marco may be able to speak to this a little bit more than I can. But my understanding is, um, a, a lifting of the road grade may very well not be eligible because they're not considering that to be driven by the emergency. They're considering that to be something that the city is doing to, to build up the roadway. So we would need something more akin to a washout or something like that to be eligible. So that, those are some of the challenges presented by the eligibility criteria of the program. Maybe something that we want to advocate on at a later date, but that is one of the challenges that we have to access funding for this. Marco, would you like to chime in on that?
Yeah, the way I interpret the guidelines through that disaster relief funding is they will only, um, consider, I guess, any kind of infrastructure work in terms of putting back the assets to the way they were prior to the, to the flood event or disaster, I guess. So in terms of, you know, raising grades, adding culverts, and improving the system, I think it's a, it's a slam dunk that they're probably not going to consider those types of expenditures and improvements to the roads. So i- in this case here, an example would be, yeah, you're better off to have the road totally wash out and, and bring that road back into service, serviceability again to, to the elevation and the construction it was prior to the event than it is to have water come up over it and try and raise the road. So, yeah, I think you've hit the nail on the head there that there are certain criteria within those guidelines for disaster relief that makes it a little more complicated, a little, um, less accommodating, I guess, for municipalities to fix their infrastructure. So I think maybe the distinction there is fixing what you had versus improving, uh, the infrastructure going forward during that event.
We think it's important just that council understands that and the public understands that. I can tell you, speaking with Charlotte and Marco, who have experienced some flooding with the municipality before, that is some of the challenges that we've had in trying to claim disaster relief funding. But what I can assure council and the public of is as Charlotte said, we are tracking all of those expenses, and we are going to make as compelling of an argument as we can for why we've done the work that we've done and why it was directly attributable to the flood. So stay tuned on that. But I, I do think that that piece of education here this morning i- is helpful for council to understand. It's probably, I know we've had flooding before, but this does seem to be a little bit more widespread, affecting more roadways than maybe we've had in the past. It has required a certain, uh, level of effort that maybe we haven't seen in the past. So stay tuned on that. But I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, and two things just as follow-up is, um, perhaps the data over the years to show that this is an abnormal event, which is probably not going to be an abnormal event in coming years, might support, um, some of the work, um, in rebuilding those, um, roads. That might help, just comes to mind. And, um, considering, again, considering the deputation we had, that's going to be good communication going forward to the public is we are working on your behalf. This is what we're trying to do, and this is what's happening to up, up to date. So I think it all ties together. But that's really good information, Kyle, so thank you.
Ms. Porter?
Yeah, um, I, I'm just, I had a couple of questions, but I'm wondering if I should wait till the, the item that you mentioned on the agenda, like about the flood update?
Yeah, sorry, that, that was mostly money-based, so we'll, we'll, Charlotte, we'll let you carry on.
Well, sort of my questions, but I'll, I'll, I'll hold them until, uh, until we get further onto the agenda where we're actually talking about that particular, or this particular issue.
Okay. Sorry, Charlotte, you just, you sort of touched on that with your comments, so I thought we would just jump off there briefly, but I'll let you pick it up.
All good, Charlotte, you have everything covered here. Thank you. Any, any further questions beyond this?
Yeah. Uh, so on the revenue side, the user fees for environmental services, are we concerned about that? It's a little over six percent, a difference in variance, uh, year over year at this point, like up until the end of April? Or is that a seasonal thing, Charlotte, or?
To, um, set up the accrual and reverse, set up the accrual in December and reverse it in January. So, um,
Okay.
Now that, uh, the budget's done, we're, we're full steam into, you know, completing the year-end, and, and I anticipate that will be done for the next set of statements.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further, council? Okay, moving on, uh, flooding status update, item three point one, Marco.
Yeah, I guess I was, uh, requested to provide an update to council on certain events, I guess, over the last few weeks or month or so during the flooding. Um, so the, the beginning of the report provides a little bit of background and, and the different kind of situations we're seeing out there. Black Sturgeon Lake situation in terms of its, uh, increase in water levels is more of a localized, uh, area effect with the precipitation and, and the large amount of snowfall that we had over the, the winter. Um, as, over the last few weeks here, we've seen, you know, the decline in the water, um, for about, yeah, maybe the last week to week and a half. And that's based on, I guess, the local drainage basin finally catching up in terms of its snow melt and the precipitation we've seen over the spring and the amount of outfall coming out of those lakes. Um, and contrary to the, to the Lake of the Woods situation, it's more of a regional, uh, issue where that drainage basin is quite large. It goes all the way down to, I think it starts at near Atticoke and through the Rainy River, uh, system at the south end of the lake. So we're seeing those water levels. Uh, obviously, they've risen over the last few weeks, and it's per last bit of information coming in from some of our, our road patrols and whatnot. We see those water levels on Lake of the Woods stabilized, I guess, at least for the last few days with the lack of precipitation and whatnot. And we're actually expecting another little bump, uh, late last week or, or early into this week based on the large thunderstorms and, and whatnot that they had in the southern basin around Rainy River and, and Fort Francis, which we haven't quite seen on the radar as per our measurements that we're taking at certain locations along the lake and flooded roads and whatnot in the south. and flooded roads and whatnot in the south end of town. So, that's, that's good news, I guess, in the short term. So, basically, the report here was written last week. I don't think there's a lot changed since the report. So, I guess we'll just go through the areas of work and locations that we have put effort into rehabilitating and raising. So, chronologically, on May 10th, I guess, our first event in regards to roads that occurred was the washout of the school road. That was handled with the city crews that day and I think within six to eight hours, the road was reopened. Following that, from May 12th to the 24th, we hired a contractor to raise the East Mellett Road just north of Essex Road. That was, I guess, our first grade raise and our first attempt to try and open up road systems within that northeast sector of the city. That specific location of work consisted of about 200 meters of length of road that was raised, approximately 30 inches to get it out of the water and starting, I guess, to make avenues in to get residents back in to their homes, which opened up, I guess, that area of town from the bypass up to Bell's Point Road, which is just north of the Portier Bridge. On May 16th and 17th, we hired two different contractors to work at two different locations on the west side of the Redditt Road being Carlton Road at Alcock Lake and Anderson Road just west of Carlton Road. Those two locations came up on our radar with our normal route patrols and we were finding that those two locations were key locations, I guess, that water was starting to build up and starting to get close to the edge of the road. So, those two locations, we did in a proactive manner to ensure that people on the west side of the Redditt Road in the Carlton-Anderson Road loop would not be stranded, similar to the situation that we saw on the east side of Black Sturgeon Lakes. That specific work entailed about 80 meters on the Anderson Road that was raised, about 30, 30 inches or so. And the other section that was done was about 120 meters in length. And these grade raises raged anywhere from 30 to 20 inches to try and make sure that we had some freeboard at those locations because they are two low points. Well, I should say the Anderson Branch Road is a low point next to the Winnipeg River system and the Carlton Road area. The Alcock Lake was receiving so much water for runoff and snowmelt that it was starting to build up right at the Carlton Road just prior to it spilling into the Winnipeg River system. Subsequent to that, on the week of May 24th, a contractor was brought in to raise the East Mellett Road about a half a kilometer north of the Portier Bridge. And it consisted of about a 20-inch grade raise over about 300 meters of length. And this further opened up the road system into the northeast sector of the city. So, it provided access all the way up to East Mellett Road, including the Coker Road, all the way to the Kelly Road where the, at that time, there was still water over the road on Coker Road and Kelly Road. On May 30th, city crews were dispatched to address the low-lying bathtub area that was presented in our deputation today on the west side of the Coker Bridge. Likewise, on the week of May 30th, a contractor was secured to make repairs to the school road between East Mellett Road and the Essex Road where there was about six to seven areas of the road that were punched through with clay boils, heavy rutting, you know, due to the saturation from the rainfalls and the snowmelt and the amount of traffic using that over time. So, with that work, with the school road then opened, accessibility was gained through East Mellett and the school road to double back to the Essex Road in the Beauty Bay kind of golf course area all the way down to Hooterville Trail. So, that opened up a fairly large piece of road infrastructure for accessibility purposes for those specific residents. On June 2nd, there was a failed culvert that was, that equipped Burlwinder Drive down to One Lane, which is located on Dufresne Island. That was another kind of emergency type of repair we needed to do to make sure that that, that specific road wasn't cut off because it is a dead end. As soon as you come off bypass, Burlwinder Road is a dead end, one way in, one way out. The final bit of work that we have done with contractors to date was located on the Bags and Essex Loop where one section of roadway was repaired by a contractor again, where there was washout and exposed corduroys. So, the logs that keep the road stable underneath the gravel surfaces and whatnot were exposed and needed to be rehabilitated in terms of graveling and reinforcing that section of roadway to open it up. And likewise, you know, several, a few kilometers from that location, we had a failed culvert right across the road, which made it impassable. And again, that culvert was replaced on June 3rd, I believe. So, basically, to date, there are two sections of roadway that are still closed, that being Coker Road at the Kelly Road and Essex Road just north of Hooterville Trail. Getting into the urban area, there's a few areas of concern. I guess the most prominent one being Sedesky Road, which has been closed for several days now with about 10 inches of water over it. That's due to, again, the rising lake levels, which again pushed up the elevation of the Lawrence and Creek, which has now inundated Sedesky Road at its lowest point. And again, that's about a 10-inch standing water on Sedesky Road, which again has been closed for several days now. The other area of concern we have and are keeping an eye on is Second West Bay Road. It has probably two to three inches of standing water on it now. We were expecting that one probably to go underwater, but luckily enough, the lake levels have stabilized over the last few days, but we are still keeping an eye on that one. Other areas that have been affected is obviously the Kuwait Ballfields, the Kuwait Wharf next to Two Bears Marina. Another big impact, I guess, to the city's drainage and storm systems is the area of Dingwall Ford. It's quite low in elevation. And currently, what's happening now is the drainage ditch located behind the Ford dealership there is now filled up probably three to three and a half feet of standing water due to the fact that the creek has come up so far, the water has come up the storm pipes all the way from Lawrence and Creek at the former Luby's Hotel, or I'm not sure what it's called now. But the storm pipe from the creek at that location is now backed up all the way behind Luby's Store, behind the KFC, and has now filled the ditch and behind Dingwall Ford. And now, the storm system out on Highway 17 East in front of the Days Inn and Dingwalls is experiencing water right to the surface of the roadway. And those puddles you see in the Days Inn lot and in partially into Dingwall Ford's parking lot, that is lake level. So, we are keeping an eye on that. It's not like we can do much for Dingwall Ford or whatnot, but we're just trying to keep eyes on, is water rising, is it going down or whatnot? And about a week or so ago, I think Heather had notified Dingwall Ford just to put them on notice that saying, you know, this isn't a city infrastructure issue. This is now a lake level. It's not a blocked culvert. It's not a blocked storm system or whatnot. So, we wanted to make sure that they would have adequate notification if they had to do any kind of mitigating purposes for any kind of flooding that may occur due to the rising lake. Likewise, the other area that we've been keeping an eye on, but is very similar to the Dingwall Ford, is the Hyundai dealership on Railway Street. Now, with the creek level coming up, the water is now progressed through the culvert on Gould Road and is now inundating that corner of Gould Road and Railway Street, that's the corner of the Hyundai dealership. So, if you drive by there on Railway Street, you'll see a portion, a great portion of the corner, there's, I guess, southwest corner of their lot is now inundated with water. And again, it's not due to a lack of city infrastructure. It's just that the lake has come up that far and is starting to back up, you know, certain drainage systems. The other area that we're keeping an eye on too is Golf Course Road just past Glen Cameron Drive, which is the, I guess, the quicker way into the, to the Rat Portage Marina. Currently, it's been stable again with water levels and it's pretty much lapping right up to the shoulders of the road, so we are keeping an eye on that. If the water does come up, obviously, we'll have to close that. And there shouldn't be any threat to the reserve or the Marina and whatnot because they've got a secondary access road through Rat Portage Road. So, that won't be as impactful, I guess, as some other road closures. The other areas we're keeping an eye on is Furbash Road just east of the Sedesky Road. Again, it's a low-lying area that will take quite a bit of water. And if the, you know, lake continues to rise, that'll probably be the next road or potential next road that might go underwater in the south end of town. So, we're keeping an eye on that one. To date, we're still good. I believe the upper range of those culverts are still functional, so we're not too bad at that point. The other area we're keeping an eye on too is the Gould Road. We have a set of four or five culverts across Gould Road, guessing maybe a couple of kilometers beyond Railway Street and maybe a half a kilometer north of Transmitter Road. That takes quite a bit of a drainage area kind of to the northeast of the city. Again, those water levels are still stable, but they are quite high compared to normal. So, we're hoping that as the creek builds up where these culverts spill into Lawrence and, Lawrence and Lake, that, you know, we don't have any issues there. But again, something to keep an eye on and watch on. During our flood meetings, Stace has joined in in a few occasions to kind of discuss the other parks and docks infrastructure and taking, I guess, measures to mitigate certain risks and whatnot. I don't know if you want to add a few words about what we've done with docks and parks?
Yeah, so we did a complete review of all of our docks, just to have a look at things. We struggled to get barrels, just like everybody has. We cured 20 barrels and we strategically placed them on docks where we were concerned about them giving away from the crips. The floors are fine. It's really where it gets attached to the shore that becomes a problem. We've left the ramps open, with the exception of Portage Bay. And the thought there is that we can actually do a two-person launch, right? One person goes in the boat, boat goes in the water. Person who's in the boat goes onto the dock. They push the boat forward to the ramp and then somebody gets in the front and then away you go. We have closed wherever there's wood that's underwater and posted signs. Rational, there is, if wood is underwater, when the sun comes out, the algae's going to read there very, very quickly. So, from a risk and fall standpoint, it gets very slippery quick. If you look at Kuwait, for example, the wharf, it's all concrete up until the pier's edge. So, we mark the pier's edge and the feeling there is it's, yes, you're walking through water, but it's not like on wood where it's very slippery. So, yeah, so we'll just continue to monitor. Things are slowing down. It's still rising, but it appears to be slowing down. And yeah, we'll just keep an eye on this.
So, I guess during our flood meetings at the SLT level, we've come up with, I guess, a certain warning system, I guess, if you want to call it, more based towards the roads' infrastructure in which, you know, we'll hit certain key elements of public notification, I guess, in regards to those various conditions. So, it starts at an evacuation alert when the water is seen to be up to the road, but not over the road. An evacuation warning when there's water over the road, but less than six inches or 15 centimeters. And then an evacuation order in a road closed when the water over the road or on the road is six inches or more. And then there's other situations where we have closed roads, not because of specific water, standing water events or flooding, but more so due to precipitation events where there's washouts and just general maintenance needed that there's no standing water, but there is some detriment to the road, whether it's a washout or some defect on the road that needs to be taken care of. So, that could go all the way up to a road close depending on the condition of that road and the state it's in at any given time prior to its repair. So, we were expecting last week by Lake of the Woods Control Board kind of reporting and investigation into their websites for water levels. I think as early as mid to early last week, they were indicating, you know, within the next five to seven days, we should see water rise another six to eight inches, which according to our observations, at least out in the field at these key locations that we're monitoring, I think we've, we've kind of, you know, experienced stable conditions as opposed to levels increasing. So, are we going to hit the 1950 flood? Well, I guess that's, you know, yet to be seen. I guess the other concern that we do have, I guess, in regards to docks is some of our downtown infrastructure in terms of our wharfs. We're keeping an eye on that also, especially the Main Street Wharf where we have two, or what's the name of the Houseport Adventures? You know, we're concerned about that specific location just based on the size of those vessels and whatnot tied up to the wharf. You know, we want to make sure that they've been notified to maybe come up with an option or a plan to maybe vacate that wharf in case the water gets too high. From what I've seen in previous photos, I think we're maybe about a foot lower or maybe foot and a half lower than the 1950 flood just based on photographs I've seen in the past on the Main Street Wharf where it was inundated or covered with water. And looking at the other day, it looks like we maybe have about a foot of freeboard right now on the Main Street Wharf. So, you know, if you get another eight inches of increase in water level, we might have to be looking at some other impacts here and address those accordingly.
So, can I just pick up on that? So, the Main Street Wharf is a color system. So, it's made to fluctuate with water. And as you know, when west wind comes through there or something like that by bush and all the ways come through there pretty hard. So, that, it all, it floats other than the main pier itself. So, every, you've got ramps coming down the east side, west side, and then on the south side where Houseport Adventures, it's all heavy, heavy colors. So, that's allowed to go or to float. Matheson Street Pier does not have as much room, so we've mitigated some of the risk there by putting tires in so that it allows it to ride up the side. Matheson Street will become a problem before Main Street becomes a problem.
So, I guess in wrapping up, you can kind of see the various events in the report, kind of a chronological date of events, you know, the amount of time and effort and resources and an effort that's gone into some of the repair of these roads over the last few weeks. So, that's what we, I think the basis of this report was to try and get council up to speed on, you know, how much effort and time we put into reopening these roads to the best of our ability here.
I'll have a few comments, but I'll wait for council to put theirs. Counselor for you?
Yeah, thanks, Marco. I mean, it's, it's one of these things where you can do all the things you want, but, I mean, everything's out of your control, right? Or out of everybody's control, and hopefully people realize that. When we talk about, hopefully, at the end of the period where water's actually lower to a point where we can take a look at some of our road infrastructure and have a better inspection, can we, at some point, I mean, back to council on that, because we could be... because we could be talking about a lot of money and it could be money that's coming out of whatever, except for flood relief from the provincial government. Look at areas or have a report where you show areas and that and put together a plan where we can at least incorporate into the long-term capital plan going forward. Can't do everything tomorrow, but look at some of these and mitigate for the future. And that because who knows, like with climate change and everything else, is this the new norm? I don't know.
Right.
Like, I mean, you know, we get another bad winter and a bit of rain and, you know, we're right back where we started again. Because if there are areas in that and we keep going back and I'm just looking from a cost-benefit analysis, if we're going back and repairing roads all the time, is it better in certain areas to spend the money and make those remediations? And if we're looking at different, if, if we're going from a hundred-year flood to, I don't know, maybe the new norm is going to be 125 years or something, who knows? Like, I, I guess I'm just wondering, is that money better spent to look at fixing some of the, and I know we can't fix them all like in one year, but take the worst ones and start looking at what we can do to be a little more prepared for future weather events?
So Counselor Porey, we are working on that as we speak and we will have something for council in the very near future.
Okay. Yeah, I think what we're, we're looking at here is probably doing a, what I call is a roads' need study. Potentially that would encompass roads north of the bypass. I think that might entail hiring a consultant to come up with a comprehensive plan because I think there's two, two avenues of work we should be looking at. One is, you know, the, the current conditions of low-lying roads that are susceptible to flooding, like we've experienced this time. And there's others, from what I understand, in, in the rural area north of the bypass that are more concerned about, you know, maybe that weren't affected by the flooding, but are, are concerned about poor road conditions, you know, not enough gravel, not enough ditching, you know, just general maintenance and upkeep of those roads in addition to those areas that need very specific improvements like grade raising and whatnot. So I think we have to look at an overall encompassing plan that would include grade raises for these kinds of situations, but also ongoing maintenance of those roads on, like you said, where is it best spent? What is, you know, if we're looking at a three-to-five-year capital plan, where do you start? You know, where is the most important areas to be addressed in a timely manner? What can maybe wait a little bit? So I think in discussions with Kyle, that's, that's what he was getting at. I think we're going to have to kind of sit down and, and, you know, come up with some type of a, a plan in the report that potentially as early as, you know, 2023, we can start, like you say, planning for the future in a three-to-five-year plan and have various costs and, and locations kind of keyed out on, on a priority basis for sure.
Counselor Snell?
Yeah, thanks, Samara. That's encouraging to hear that and from the deputation this morning as we know that we're going to have to debrief and move forward with different strategies and looking where the gaps are presumably for the upcoming operating budget for next year. And I guess that's why we left your room and didn't vote on a five-year capital budget, because did we know this was going to happen? So now we do, but yeah, definitely. And that's what the community needs to know, is there's going to be lessons learned. We'll be looking at those gaps, we'll debrief. And perhaps more attention is needed on those, on those northern roads. So we've definitely heard the public when it comes to that. And when you're talking about going down to Corteroy, we know that that's when you can tell that roads, people have been building as swamps. And I think that's important to know. But one thing I wanted to, I'm not sure you're aware of, and I'm just going to talk about my own neighborhood, the West Bay Road. So you know that water that fuddles out of Portage Bay, Lake of the Woods Portage Bay, under the culvert at Happy Jackson, down into Mink Bay? And usually flows from underneath the tunnel, just up from, on the railway tracks from Second West Bay, usually flows into the Winnipeg River. But when the water gets this high, the Winnipeg River is flowing back into that basin and that's what's causing that flooding.
Yep, no one for sure.
But on, on a, on a happier note, the kids are catching tadpoles on that road right now. And I remember we did that when the road used to flood, when we were kids, so. And again, Marco, as I said to the deputant, council's role right now is to step back and let staff do their work. And that's what we have been doing. But once staff have kind of got caught up, I'd like to do a tour of some of these areas or perhaps other counselors like to, because I'm not really that familiar with those roads north of, north of the bypass. But yeah, when you're, you're all caught up and, and you're willing to give us a tour of some of that, I'd certainly like to do that.
Sure.
So thank you and your staff for the work that you've been doing. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counselor McMillan?
Yeah, just, just a couple of comments. And Kyle, just going back to what you were saying about staff are working on a report. I think the, the positive thing is, is in the Sustainability Action Plan, climate impact is addressed. It's foremost in our strat plan to address these issues. And having sat in on the FCM conference the past few days, it, that's a critical need across the country is, is climate change and the impact of climate change. But I'll be careful how I say it, but I, I listened to deputation this morning and I respect the fact that there's frustration and it's difficult when you can't get to your home. But we, it's important to commend our staff. I'm sure it hasn't been a five-day week for staff for about three months, maybe, or something like that. And as a counselor, I'm, I'm happy with the communications I get, the regular updates. We get them respecting residents' concerns and whatever, but I, I really commend our staff and our team for keeping on top of this and doing the best we can. Because nobody ordered this up through, through Costco or anything. So we're hit, we're hit pretty bad. It's our, a lot of the areas and around us. So I really appreciate the efforts. Thank you.
Yeah, just a few points that I would like to share. First and foremost, you know, we've got a team around, you know, the Emergency Management Control Group. Our, our team is exceptionally experienced in these types of things and I feel really good about the personnel that we have and the decisions that we've made in leading through this emergency. You know, some of the principles that we've applied, you know, as we've been going through this process, you know, how can we facilitate access to impacted areas for emergency personnel? You know, how is any intervention going to impact the integrity of the road? You know, these roads are, they're wet, the base isn't necessarily stable. We've seen that on some of the roads. And in some of the roads that have been traveled on during the closures, we've seen significant damage been done, which has now required us to go back and do more, you know, remediation. The safety of employees and contractors has been top of mind. And, you know, general emergency management principles and general engineering principles. You know, I don't think you need to be an engineer, respectfully, Marco, to know that trying to build a road in, in, you know, you know, a foot or two feet of water is not the ideal circumstances that you'd want to be doing so in. So, you know, we have tried to, you know, follow fundamental engineering principles as much as possible throughout this process and we feel pretty good about what we've done. I actually think we've, we've taken a unique approach and we've been fairly innovative and creative in how we've gotten, gone on about that. I can tell you that we've received some inquiries from other jurisdictions about, you know, how are you carrying out this work under these conditions? And, you know, different jurisdictions have made different determinations about how they want to manage situations in their area. I, I can just tell you as the chief administrative officer, I'm very confident and very happy and pleased with how we've handled this to date. You know, over time, we've developed, you know, this sort of system for, you know, the roads, which, you know, council would be familiar with, but I will share, share with members of the public, you know, area, road of concern, you know, something that we're monitoring, the water is up to the road. That then triggers into an evacuation warning when we see water, you know, six inches over the road. An evacuation order slash road closed when water gets above six inches. And then road closed when that road, you know, we feel is no longer safe to traverse. So what's interesting about an emergency like this is it's sort of a slow burn. You know, it, it's, it's not a, okay, we've got a fire and everybody needs to evacuate and there's a very, that's a very rapid emergency. This one's more of a slow burn. And so what I would say to council and what I would say to members of the public is the Emergency Management Control Group was meeting daily, you know, even during the weekends, during the early part of the emergency. We were considering information that we were receiving every day from Lake of the Woods Control Board, from ministry, from other sources, from our staff with the measurements and the observations that they were making. And we use that information to inform the decisions that we were making. So there was certainly no sitting on our hands, there was certainly no arbitrary decisions. You know, there's always an opportunity to, you know, debate decisions that are made. But what I would tell you is we, at all times, debated issues and there was, there was great discussion around the table and a lot of perspectives shared on, on, you know, both sides. Do we go this way or do we go that way? Very animated discussion and I think it always made sure that we ended up in a place where sort of everybody felt comfortable with the direction that we were moving. And we made those decisions with the information that we had in the best interest of the city in the short and long term. So, you know, again, I, I would just like to commend the effort of the team. You know, it's, it's important to recognize that everybody also has their day jobs. And so we've been trying to do our best to balance the emergency and also make sure that we're delivering, you know, services to the community. Potholes have not stopped, street sweeping has not stopped. And there's lots of other services and programs that we offer to residents. And I, I think we've done an admirable job. Absolutely, we will take the opportunity and have taken the opportunity as an Emergency Management Control Group to debrief lessons learned throughout the emergency and we'll continue to do that as we exit the emergency and start moving on to a long-term plan. And the team, we've had great discussions and the team recognizes that the, the north needs some focus. And we've, so we're already shifting and starting to direct some of our attention there. But do want to acknowledge that we are still dealing with some situations, particularly on the Coker Road and particularly on the Essex Pass by Hooterville there, that we still, we still have some decisions to make. So the emergency, it's not done and, and obviously the urban area is impacted now too. So just wanted to share those points for consideration because I think they're important. You know, restoring access to residents is, is one consideration that we have. And just want to make it clear to council and to members of the public that there's a lot of considerations that need to be made. And again, I just, I feel that the group did their best to take the information in, filter it, consolidate it and make a decision that we all felt comfortable with and that we thought was in the best interest of the city. And I, you know, I'm, I'm proud of the work that the team has done and I appreciate council's, you know, support and the representation that you have provided for members of the public by continuing to pass on information that you're receiving from them, asking questions to, to get the information to you and to members of the public. So I appreciate that as well. And the only other thing that I would add is we did have a meeting last night, Chief Redmond, Acting Mayor Gosson, myself, with the Lake of the Woods Control Board. We did have a sizable portion of the board there. I think there was only one individual missing and we had a staffer from Ottawa as well. Mainly a reconnaissance mission, I would say. They're doing a tour all over the watershed to sort of get a sense for what's going on. What I can share with you, you know, no, I'm not a prognosticator, I'm not a water basin expert. What they did share is that some of that volume that we were expecting to get from the south, from the rainy lake watershed, yeah, hasn't materialized. It's not equal, but roughly right now, roughly as much water is coming into the Lake of the Woods is going out. So we do foresee some rise, but we anticipate it will be a lot slower than what we've seen to date. Of course, all of that can be thrown out the window if we see a very large precipitation event. So that's the latest, latest information we have as of last night from the Control Board. I want to, you know, thank the Control Board for coming out and taking the time to see some of our challenges. And, you know, certainly, you know, they'll take that back and, you know, it's kind of difficult. There's not really much that can be done right now and we are sort of at the mercy of the precipitation coming into the system. But I thought it was a productive meeting and I'll leave it to Chief Redmond and Acting Mayor Gos if they have any other comments on last night.
No, it was good to see them here and I think they were kind of an eye-opener for, for them seeing some of the high-water spots. I would show them a number of different spots around the city. So it was a good conversation and just very good interest from them.
I, I know there's a bit of a narrative that, you know, we have had flooding in the past. I do think it's really important to understand that the levels that we are seeing are historical based on every piece of information that we have. So I think that's important. I, I think it's, it's different than some of the flooding events that we've had in the past, as I understand it, based on the information.
I'm going to close it off with, as a resident of the Carlton Road for 47 years, I really do welcome roads' analysis for the roads north of the bypass. There are, there are some issues that are, that are going to take some work and it's going to take, take an effort to fill some of them out. On the Carlton Road, I know about half a dozen spots where the bedrock is popping up and I'm sure the radio operators can tell you exactly where every one of them is. I had two rather loud conversations, not on my end, but from taxpayers. One from the Kelly Road, Kelly Coker Road, and one from the Sadesky Road. And last night I did notice that there are people driving through the Sadesky Road section despite the road close. And I understand that there are people doing the same thing at the Kelly Coker. Now, I would assume that once we put up the road close sign, because there are structural issues, I understand at the Kelly Coker, once they start to travel on that, that road close sign, their liability now shifts from the city to the, to the people who are driving is...
That's correct.
I believe it should, yeah.
Yeah, those roads are closed and no one should be accessing those roads. That's why we've closed them. So if you do access a closed road, we really encourage residents to make sure that they understand the insurance implications themselves.
Yep.
Yeah, at, at the start, especially on the East Melick Road, I think our first closure near Essex, you know, our, our patrols would come back the next day and find the signs moved off into the ditch or actually thrown into the ditch and whatnot. So, you know, they're, I, I think the signs have been staying a little, you know, more permanent now in their locations and people are heeding the advice or I guess taking their risk and going across those roads. But yeah, I guess there's two factors there is, is the safety of, of the vehicle and the driver going across a flooded road not knowing what's there. But like Kyle had indicated, you know, the more traffic driving on a flooded soggy road is causing more damage to, you know, it needs to be addressed in the future.
Sure.
My other question was the Gould-Sadesky Road. We were, as one of the areas we looked at was that, that section on Sadesky Road last night. We drove by Superior Portman and then we saw there's an awful lot of water in their yard. How does that impact our railway street rehabilitation this year?
At this point, I, I think we're still going to carry on. It's still a few weeks away. I'm thinking, based on the schedule that the contractor submitted, they might not be there for another month or so. So hopefully some water levels will go down. I think Railway Street at that specific location is, is high enough to still work on, even though there's, there's flooding in the adjoining lots and properties there. There might be some small section of storm sewer that we might not be able to get to that does drain out into the creek through the K Sports Yard that was scheduled as part of that project. That may have to be delayed and maybe rescheduled till next year or another phase of Railway Street. So that's about the only impact we see right at this point in time.
Thank you.
Any further questions, counsel, comments?
The only other thing I might offer to council is there was a, an attachment to that report. I think that, that came late last night. So the report might make a little bit more sense when you see the map and, and there's three or four or five different photos, aerial photos that we were lucky enough to receive from the M and R just to kind of give you an idea of the, the areas that were worked on and the two major flooded areas being Essex at Hooterville and Kelly Road at, or Coker Road at Kelly Road.
Yeah, and the last thing I would say, we're not alone, you know, Fort Francis, Rainy River, Sioux Lookout. I mean, you know, all, all of these measures, evacuation orders and road closures and other measures are being taken in communities across the Northwest. It really truly is a historical type of situation.
Okay, moving on. Item 4.1, Budget Amendment, Successful 2022 Successful Funding Projects. Please.
Thank you. So council report before you today is related to a number of budget amendments, seven in total, related to the funding that we would receive through the NOHFC for investment in candidate infrastructure program for the Hooterville Elevation Center project. We have spoken about these projects on numerous occasions through getting appropriate resolutions and such from NOHFC. In an effort to give you as much detail as I can in terms of the breakdown of where not only the scope of...
of breakdown of where, not only the scope of work, but the, you know, what monies that we are going to leverage to pay for these projects to fulfill the city's obligation as it relates to our portion of the funding. I've developed Schedule A, which speaks to what's going to occur in 2022 and similarly, what is going to come from subsequent years. It's worth noting that the Rec Center project is a multi-year project. It is, can go up to five years along. So it's going to take a while to get through these projects. From a timing perspective, other than the museum, the intent would be that we'd be able to do portions and start to draw down on some of these monies on, on all of these projects with the exception of the Museum Ru project, which we would put off till next summer, just from a timing perspective. This is a very thorough, very detailed report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
The total is $6,496,499.56. And, and again, just want to acknowledge the great work, work of staff and appreciate Stacy. It was kind of like a beautiful mind trying to put this report together and make it all sort of make sense. But so appreciate the work there. You know, this is just a really good news story to bring six and a half million dollars into the city, you know, reducing the burden on taxpayer dollars.
That beautiful mind comment is going to haunt you, you know. Okay, moving on to the next one. The Hanes new lease removal.
Yes, thank you. The report before you, council, is related to a one-year lease extension. Typically, this would have come to you in January of the year. It was delayed due to some procurement changes that we were making, new template documents that we were going through. So it is a, it's for the property adjacent to Hanes. That's where they put their, their garbage bin there. The annual income we generate from this is $471 and it's to represent a 3% increase here over here. And there's a map there to show you exactly where it is. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
No questions. Next, Dave.
Thank you.
Moving on, government services, 4.1, acquisition of land. Adam.
Okay. So the intent of this report is to proceed with an offer to purchase of 38 various pins or parcels of land in which the municipality largely has municipal infrastructure over. So this is, as noted in the title, the report was formerly in the, the name of the Western Ontario Lumber Limited Company. After that company did dissolve, it was vested with the Crown, which the Crown is now in a position to proceed in transferring those lands to the municipality. So it's something that the city staff have been certainly eager to, to move forward on for a number of years now. It will allow us for any redevelopment of those areas. Principally, these areas are in the Lakeside area that minimize any legal risk as well as any operational challenges oftentimes, especially when you look at any funding implications to which you may not have clear title to the land. It does come into, to play. So this is, and, and I think based on the, the price of the land as well, to which $2 per parcel as well as any admin costs with the Crown is evidence of the, the fact that these lands should have been invested to the municipality many years ago. And this will, will support, you know, any future projects and moving forward. And I'm happy to take any questions related to it.
Counselor Smith.
I was just really surprised to see all those small parcels there because this is the first time I've ever heard that that company, I don't know how long they've been gone for. And why would they have had all those parcels accumulated all over, you know, that area? Just little parcels.
Yeah, and it's a bit of an exercise. We were engaging some legal counsel on and trying to, you know, understand a bit of the history as well as to have a full scope of those lands. But fortunately, when they went to the Crown, that kind of fell into our lap that we were able to, to move forward on it. So I'm unclear on the, the historical nature of how that happened or why that, you know, land was in transfer to the city. I know this is not, I think, unique to the, to Lakeside area and to which there's lands which we have assets over. And it's an ongoing, I think, challenge or project for staff is, is cleaning up those lands as the opportunities kind of present themselves. And so it's, yeah, it's definitely a big task for us.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think you'll find a majority of those lands are, are the, are the right-of-ways within Lakeside. You know, less the small piece, I guess, at the, next to the former laundromat in Blue Heron there. But I do believe the Western Lumber Company was, I guess, a stud mill operation that, that had operations close to the Rec Center or thereabouts. So they probably owned a large tract of land, probably obtained from the Hudson Bay Company. And over time, I guess, created certain subdivisions in Lakeside. And as those earlier subdivisions came on stream, the right-of-ways, I guess, were never dedicated by the Western Lumber Company and never accepted by the former Rapportage or whatever in a formal process to put it into the city's name under a right-of-way. So I think these are just kind of old hanging right-of-ways that were never taken care of properly right from day one when the Western Lumber Company or whoever they sold to to make the subdivisions, you know, transferred these right-of-ways. Some of the smaller narrower pieces are, are actual lane allowances that you see on those drawings. But again, I think it does clean up quite a bit of, of confusion in the Lakeside area. And I guess the precipitating factor of this was actually Enbridge Gas Company wanting to do some gas work in Lakeside, asking us for permission to, to extend their mains and do whatever work they needed to. And them doing some research into this area going, the city doesn't own these. How, why are you giving us permission to go ahead with this work? Well, it's kind of a longstanding fact, I guess, of several decades or maybe 100 years or so that, that this has precipitated and finally come to a conclusion because, I guess, without Enbridge pushing the issue through the government, provincial government, and with it being, I guess, a defunct corporation, made it a lot easier to obtain these as opposed to a singular person owning these who maybe created the subdivision is long past, where you have to jump through a bunch of hoops to, to, you know, advertise in certain Gazette, you know, publications and whatnot to say, is there any heirs, successors, you know, family members of, of the previous owner that may have interest in these lands? So anyway, it's, it's a big boon to the city to, to obtain these lands as quick and as, as economically as we see here, just having to pay the $2 fee and, and cover some, some lane fees and stuff.
Nice to get it cleaned up. Interesting piece of history. Thanks for that.
Counselor McMillan, did you have?
No, I'm good.
I thought you were, because you were a young man at that time.
I was going to tell you about, I was going to tell you about one of the stud mills, I think, was by the Rec Center on the creek, but that was before my time. And then there was one in Lakeside, which was before my time.
Yeah, as I understand it, was several associated businesses. And one of the bigger ones was Windham Sash Company.
Yeah. But I do remember the 1950s flood.
Okay. All right, anything further on that one? Next to our amendment to the municipal capital facilities bylaw. So we're going to...
Yep. So the, the intent for this report here is to just further support affordable housing projects in the community. With the, the bylaw being in effect for about three years now, we've, I think we've noted some of the constraints in the existing bylaw in which generally for projects in Canora, based on the, the cost to move ahead, to meet our definition for affordable housing and have all units contain those affordable units. It's somewhat impractical. So with the, the change to the bylaw, it does enable the city participate in projects in which there's a mix. So you could have a mix of market and affordable units. And then it is to the city council's discretion, which the nature of the support that could be provided. So the bylaw sets basically the, the policy framework for, in which a city would be able to enter into a municipal capital facilities agreement with a proponent. And through this agreement, that nature of the support would be further formalized and any terms and conditions tied to it would be developed as well. So our hope is that this, you know, creates more of a carrot to, to moving ahead on some of these affordable housing projects and, and has an impact and addresses some of our strategic priorities.
Counselor, Counselor Pori.
Adam, just so I have this straight in my mind. So when we've entered into agreements with the Canora District Service Board, you know, either a swap or a purchase of land on their behalf, and then we've done some, we've provided funding to be reimbursed to the proponent at a time when it's completed, like for infrastructure. So what is this more on the private sector? Like, does this, like, addresses a private sector, not a government department or a government-funded department? Is this the difference? The only difference?
Yeah, for sure. And, and I think right now, in terms of the KDSB being a public agency, the, there, there isn't a kind of a legal requirement to have such agreement to, to avoid any kind of challenges with bonusing. So what this agreement does, it allows you to, to, to work around those bonusing regs in the municipal act. It allows you to, to participate for not only just the private sector, but also for nonprofit entities as well.
Counselor Smith.
Yeah, those are good questions, Counselor Pori, and thanks. Because I was kind of wondering about that. I was trying to get my head around what this really, really means in relation to the KDSB. So that goes back to conversations around inclusive housing where we're trying to incentivize developers to, along with building market rent, if they put those, some of those affordable units into their builds, they will get some kind of rebate on infrastructure costs or something like that?
Yeah, so it's, exactly. It's more of a, I think, you know, the analogy being the carrot post of the stick, right? And I think there was a previous dedication that spoke to inclusionary zoning as a means to, to create affordable housing within some of these more market-based developments. But I think this bylaw and the change to it is really more of the carrot approach to doing so. And I think my hope is that, is a little bit more, maybe less of a coercive means to, to, to get those units going. And I will say even for, there are various projects in which the city, when we think of public works, for example, oftentimes, you know, when we're doing a, say, a municipal roadway or putting water sewer in, there's some, there's complementary and co-benefits to, say, the existing neighborhood. So that allows us still to, as staff, you know, we have some reasonable certainty, we can still do that and not have to have an agreement in place. But with the bylaw, it allows us to have complete flexibility in what the, the nature of the support may be. So...
Well, this is perfect. It's a really good way to incentivize the private sector to, to meet a need in our community. And I go back to my years, many, many years ago when I was on the Towne-Culaton Planning Committee, there was a provincial grant for developers that when they were building market housing, if they included a quarter of their project as affordable housing, they got grants for that. So, yeah, this, this is a really good step. Thanks.
Anything else on this? Adam, moving on. Building officials appointment bylaw.
Okay. So currently, the, the city of Canora does have two building officials, being a CBO and Deputy Chief Building Official. But be, given the criticality of the, the service area, this, what we're proposing here is to appoint a number of individuals from RSM Building Consultants as a more of a contingency plan in the event that there is, say, unforeseen absences or in the event that, and similar to what we do for other service areas where maybe a third-party review is, needs to be triggered. Unlike other service areas, so I use planning as an example, there's no legal requirement to have, say, an appointment to a planner to in order to do various reports or so forth or to make recommendations. However, under the Ontario Building Code Act, the municipality does have to have such officials appointed and they must, in order to carry out the work, to be fully qualified in those areas. So recognizing that the, I'd say, the, those technical requirements that I would like to, to have this appointment bylaw go forward to allow us to use that, these consultants when, more on as-needed basis and also just to avoid any, any challenges we may have into the future if there are gaps in service that we, we do have.
Questions?
Yeah.
Counselor McGowan.
Is, is there any layoffs going to be involved in this? A deputy building inspector or not?
No. There is no layoffs or no staffing implications with this whatsoever. It's simply about providing some, or having some additional support for the department to have more of the background. Obviously, just noted in the budget that I didn't give any cost because at this point in time, the first step is simply having them appointed. I wouldn't want, say, in the event that we needed to use them, to wait for next council meeting to have that appointment bylaw go forward before we could actually have them do any plans, review, inspections, or any other enforcement. Because in the absence of having an official who has the qualifications or being appointed, you can't carry out those activities.
Anything further? Our next committee of the whole meeting is Tuesday, July 12, 2022. Counsel, any comments? Start with Counselor McGowan there.
No, I have nothing at this time. Thanks.
Counselor Smith.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. I just want to ask, Adam, is this your last council meeting?
This is for sure my last. It's hiding the pain under my eyes.
So I just want to say that good luck in your new job and in your community. I do hope to see you back. It's been a pleasure working with you and you will be missed. Thanks, Adam.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor McMillan.
Oh, I'm good. Thanks.
Counselor Chase.
I have nothing to do at this time. Thank you.
Counselor Pori.
Thanks. Acting Deputy Mayor, is that? Okay. Or Mayor Gosse? Okay, whatever you called that one. So I just want to acknowledge, we had a provincial election last week and I just want to acknowledge all the candidates that ran because as we know, it's not always easy. You give up a lot of time. Win or lose, it doesn't matter. And not, people putting their name forward, I think is very important. But I also want to recognize and congratulate our newly elected or re-elected MPP and look forward to the continued work with him. He's been a tremendous asset, putting party politics aside, you know, proof in the pudding in this, in this agenda today where we have, we have all kinds of grant money and such that we wouldn't have had. And we have projects on the go that we wouldn't have had on the go. So congratulate him. Hopefully, as a council, we continue to work forward with this individual in his role as MPP and hopefully as a cabinet minister or not. So kudos to Greg Rickford. And again, a big shout out to all the other, I believe it was seven other candidates that ran in the provincial election. Job well done.
And I would just like to mention that June 21st is National Indigenous Peoples' Day. It looks like Canora Chiefs Advisory has pulled together a pretty major event out at the former Striker Farm. Beginning at 10 o'clock, there were invitations to, to the general public. I would suggest that councilmen get out there at 10 and be back here for the noon meeting. It would be well worth it. They have a whole slew of dignitaries, a lot planned for the day. It looks like a very major project on their part. And let's all bear in mind that this is a good way to show that we're all treaty people to go out there and share and see. And I would encourage the general public to go out and see what it is. Those of us who've been out there have been mightily impressed. And I think that as they move forward, we're even going to be further impressed. So once again, 10 o'clock at the Striker Farm, June 21st. Motion to adjourn to closed meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I move the motion to close, seconded by Counselor Pori, that pursuant to Section 239, 3.1 of the Municipal Act of 2001, as amended, authorization is hereby given to the committee to move into a closed session at 10:47 a.m. for the purpose of educating, training members pertaining to the CAO update. And further, that this meeting, sorry, that at this meeting, no member will discuss or otherwise deal with any matter in a way that materially advances the business or decision-making of council.